Everyone.
You look fine.
It's something to reach for.
It's great. I'll never get there, but it's great.
Be ready. All right, we're going to call the August meeting to order. It is 7:15. We do have a forum. All members are present. We'll turn it over to Mr. Kennedy.
May we see you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting in order that your gates are so guided, rule over our hearts and our minds, that all deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will, and need to the advancement and welfare of the community as we serve. Amen. Please turn to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just want us to kick all of our microphones off. Come on, just do the bullet forward to the down position and do it. So the last meeting we had, I was wishing you all a good summer. And now we're back. If you were lucky enough to come to the convocation today, my impression that it was an awesome experience. We had a student singer, Max Roy, phenomenal voice, did a great rendition of Dreamer. Brandon Shirad, next student, motivational speech, very inspiring. Amazing to see a student come back, see their successes. One of the comments I heard from a number of people and our superintendent, this board just made the comment that we'll try to get past students back. So those who were in the business of education actually get to see some of the fruits of their labors. It was great to see his successes. And a number of people said, you know, that's what inspires me, knowing that somebody that we had a part in their life has become successful. So and all students are successful again, but just to see the show. And then we had an opera rendition from September Bearquinn. So it really was an amazing day. It was very inspiring. I got the impression that there was a lot of enthusiasm. It seemed to be in the room. So I got that impression. I'm excited about this new year. We have a number of new things that are going to be taking place, the new cellphone policy, which hopefully helped the educational environment and emotional well-being of our students. We'll be jumping into AI. We've balanced the classrooms where we district things. So there's a lot of great opportunities going on through there. One of Mr. Shirad's slides, and I think it was his, said empowered voices, brighter futures in the Stratford Thomas. And I don't often take pictures of those things, but I just thought that that's really something, whether that's something that we in Stratford already have, I don't know if that came from us. But I think it's something that we should adopt, and I think it's just a powerful, it's a powerful saying. So, you know, we, I think all of us got in here, got on this board to make things better. Some of our terms are coming to an end, and hopefully we've helped to make things better and hopefully we've left it in a good place for the next folks to now take it and run it further. But but if you can live by those, that saying, I think that would be great guidance. So anyway, that being said, do we have any public speakers?
No.
No public speakers. We have no student reps. We have no attorney's reports. I do not see state legislators, so. Yep, I did. And just make sure you put your headphones.
There we go. All right. So good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and talk about what's been going on at the State Board of Education. My report will be brief because we did not meet in July. And in August, we only had a brief meeting prior to our day-long retreat. That was last Wednesday. One thing of note, however, at our August meeting, just wanted to make you aware that the board did vote to keep open a 10-4B complaint against the CTEC schools. You may recall back in November, I spoke to you about the fact that a complaint had been filed in regards to the CTEC schools, which are the Connecticut Technical Education Career System. So it's considered to be a school district. It's the whole system of career and technical education schools. It was related to a practice that they were implementing with so-called safety review committees being used as a means to exclude students with special education needs from their school system. And so in, back in November, the board voted unanimously that there was cause to initiate a 10-4B complaint. And at our meeting last week, we received a comprehensive report on the investigation, which concluded that there had been problems related to this, but that through the appointment of their new executive director in this past school year, that CTEC has appeared to remedy the inequities that were going on in their system and are now in alignment with both federal and state law. But our vote to leave the investigation open means that the department can continue to monitor the situation for the upcoming school year. And then at the end of the coming school year, the department will make a recommendation to the state board to either continue to monitor, to refer the matter to a full inquiry with a panel of the state board, or to close the matter. So because we do send students to CTEC schools, I wanted to make you aware that that is something that the board is going to be monitoring for the upcoming school year. But the data that we received in our, in our report from last week absolutely showed that progress was made and that the enrollment of students with 504 and IEPs is very much in line now with school districts across the state. So that was positive to see, but we're going to continue to monitor that. The only other thing just I wanted to make sure that you knew is that my committee assignments will remain the same for the upcoming year. So I'm on legislation and policy development and also school accountability and support. And so I'll be serving on those two subcommittees. And our next state board meeting is next Wednesday. So I'll have a lot more, I'm sure, to report to you at the end of September. So thank you again. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are you seeing for policy, any, any trends in the cellphone area and what other towns are doing?
Actually, a lot. On the national level, I meet with NASB, the National Association of State Boards of Education, on a monthly basis. And more states are actually moving to a fallout ban, a complete ban at all levels. And states that have not yet done anything were very interested in the guidelines that Connecticut came up with. And so Connecticut's been sharing our guidelines with other states. What seems to be happening across our states are that schools are adopting policies very similar to what we have adopted here in Stratford, where there is a total ban on basically K8 and then flexibilities. The how it's implemented, I think, in the high schools is different. I know many of my high school teacher friends in other districts are going back for the first time experiencing yonder pouches. And we're very much more curious about our cases as opposed to yonder pouches. But regardless of how it's being implemented, it does seem to be that the move is in alignment with what Stratford is doing. Oh, and I will also say that the board has asked for other districts to come before the state board during the school year to sort of report in on challenges and successes in this area. So I know that it's an ongoing conversation. Thank you. Welcome back.
I did have a question too.
Of course.
So at the end of the year, there was a lot of confusion about the state and federal grants, the state, the state funding. Where did all that land?
Well, it all landed that eventually everything that had been clawed, well, the monies that had been clawed back, most of the federal monies, they were not returned. So the projects that were announced as funded were funded. If they were denied in the appeal process, they were denied in the second appeal process. Over the summer, where there was the pause on several title funds, that eventually was lifted and everything was supposed to be going smooth sailing going forward. One of the interesting things, though, in terms, I know a lot of people had concern that at the U.S. Department of Education, with the massive staffing reductions that had taken place, particularly in the past six months, that there's going to be a lot of problems. Monitoring IDEA, implementing title funding and all of that. A particular thing of note that I learned is that in the Senate version of the funding bill that will be voted on by maybe in the House, once they come back into session, the language specifically states that the funding is also tied to the Department of Education staffing back up to a certain level in order to maintain services to states and local districts. So that if that goes through, that's, it's through appropriations. And so it's language that's obviously not monetary, but it would require hiring back a lot of experienced people back into the department. That the perception is that will cause less disruptions going forward. So we'll see. I'll probably be able to tell you more about that in October.
And in Hartford, they've worked their way through everything. And there was a lot of, this year more so than other years, there was a lot of folks up there speaking for the local boards.
Absolutely. And so, and so a lot of that, all went through, a lot of the State Board of Education's requests for an expansion budget did go through in appropriations. It'll be interesting to see, I know, you know, there's a tiny session that's happening, a short session in September, but we'll be in another short legislative session for this year because it's an even year. So what that means is that only proposals can be made, the only legislative proposals that can be made are proposals that deal with fiscal appropriations. As opposed to in the odd years where a legislator in a long session can literally introduce bills about absolutely anything they want. In an even year, in a short session, it has to be tied to budgetary items.
I know there was some talk, and I lost track over the summer, but the governor was going to veto, whether it did, whether it didn't. I don't know where.
That may be, that may be a housing law.
That's not as the budget and the other baseline.
There was, it's a housing bill that is going back and forth. Thank you very much. Welcome back to school.
All right. So we will now jump into the Vicki Soto preschool. I had asked a few months back, just had Ms. Schmidt come up and kind of give us some, some information on how the program runs. For a lot of us, we don't understand the full inner workings of it. I'm told you've done an amazing job over there.
Thank you.
We hope we can just get some insight into what's going on and what we do helps for you.
You guys can feel free to turn your chairs if you want to see the presentations behind you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Susha, and I am the director of the preschool programs at Victoria Soto preschool. And I'd also like to introduce Kathy Cartman, who is here this evening, and she is the assistant secretary of Victoria's Central preschool. As you walk through the doors of our school, this banner hangs in the mini hallway. The handprints are the handprints of our actual students from last year. Our secretary and colleague, Leary, really spent a long time bringing children in and putting the handprints on the banner. And this vision statement is something that we all live by every single day. We want to create an environment where every child welcomes coming to our building and shows that excitement when they walk through those doors. While the teachers, staff, everyone builds a positive relationships with children, family, and staff. This begins from when you call the school and you ask about our school. It's greeting our children at the door every single day. Good morning, good afternoon. It's greeting our parents when they drop their children off at the loop and they're unbuckling their children in their car seats. And also greeting our children on the bus every day as we are unbuckling them and bringing them into our building. Our program overview, and this will give a little bit of information about how our building is run. We are a high-quality grant-funded program. The Connecticut Office of Early Childhood, the OEC, is primarily who we work with. Effective July 1st, 2025, our program, so what you may have heard earlier was something called a readiness grant, that now transitioned to what's called the Early Start Connecticut Grant. And what the state did is they combined and streamlined different grants into what is now the Early Start Connecticut Grant. We also offer family support with Care for Kids. So that helps our families within our program to provide financial assistance, assistance for child care costs. Parents do have to show their income tax, though, to the state in order to get that funding. Our commitment to quality, we are really proud that we are accredited through NIAC, the National Association for Education for Young Children. Kathy is always talking about the accreditation and NIAC with me, making sure that we follow the guidelines, making sure that our teachers receive the professional development that they need to receive, and making sure that our children have the best experiences they can have based on the NIAC guidelines that we have to follow. Our programs, we offer five different programs at the school. Our programs are inclusive by design. And what this means is that we provide an inclusive environment for children with and without special needs to learn and grow together. One of our programs is the Full Day Full Year Program. This program runs for 50 weeks and it runs from 7:30 to 5:30, five days a week. In order to be in this program, this day requires that you are on a waitlist and that you complete the formal registration process. We also offer a School Day School Year Program. It follows the Stratford Public School Calendar. We have daily sessions that run from 8:30 to 2:30. And again, it requires families to be on a waitlist and to complete the formal registration process. All of our families in our building, they must live in Stratford to attend the Victoria Central preschool. We have an integrated peer model program. And this places typically developing students as peer models for students that require special education services. Our half-day session runs from 9:00 to 11:30 and then 12:00 to 2:30. Peer models are selected from a waitlist. So we also have a waitlist for that program. This year, we're really excited in our AVA program to announce that four-year-olds will have the option to attend full day. And that was one of the things that parents, when they would call us, and Kate was, I worked collaboratively with Kate and her staff, to be able to put together a full-day program for our AVA students. And then itinerant speech services, our speech and language pathologists work with our students with communication disorders. They may come in for one to anywhere for five days a week for about a half an hour and work with our speech and language pathologists. Program funding and overview. We have many different funding sources at Victoria Soto. This took me, to Susan Nicholson, this took me quite a while to learn because there's so many different funding sources put together to run the building. We have the Early Start Grant. We also have tuition that also funds our building, and that's a heavy piece of our funding. We have subsidies through Care for Kids that come in. We also have IDEA funds and contributions from the Board of Education. The key part of our model is the Early Start Grant. And the way that's looked at is a child allocation, we call it a seat. So I'm always saying to Colleen, are our seats full? How many seats do we have full? Because you always want to make sure your seats are full every single month. That brings in our funding. The Early Start Grant offers a tuition on a sliding fee schedule for our parents at reduced, at a reduced cost. It's really important that our parents give us their income tax. We have to prove to the state that, and be verified, that we are below 65% of the state made an income in those seats. So the average of it must be 65% or below. Our seat allocations and the impact it has on our school. So currently, we are really excited to look at the total number of seats we have in our building because it's really grown over the past two years. What happens is this year with Early Start, the Office of Early Childhood put together some kind of a formula to determine how many seats we were going to get. Based on that, we received 18 full-day, full-year seats. Each classroom can hold 20 students, so two of those seats are full tuition. In our School Day School Year, we have 106 School Day School Year seats. And each one of those are grant-funded at $6,000 per seat. So the total number of grant-funded seats, we are so happy to announce, is 124 grant-funded seats. So this allows us in our district to serve more parents within our community. Again, eligibility for these seats is based on family income, and we have to definitely show the state what the family's income is and then use the sliding fee through the OEC to determine what a parent would pay as a part of their tuition. Partnering with our families on tuition, we do use Care for Kids. So many of our parents do apply for Care for Kids. We help them through the process. They come in. They work with Colleen Leary on filling out the application. We have a computer in our building that parents can go and they can apply online if they need to. So we do offer support for Care for Kids. Our full tuition seats, the full tuition for a full-day, full-year seat is $15,000 a year. It's broken into 11 payments, so it's $1,364 a month. And then I also did it like per hour, what it would cost, and it's about $6 an hour for our children in that program. Our School Day School Year seats, the total annual tuition is $7,500. It's nine payments instead of 10. You have one month that you don't have to pay, and it's about $834 a month. And that comes out to about $6.40 an hour for children sitting in one of those seats. And then our peer models are half-day. The annual tuition is now $2,000. Again, it's nine months instead of 10, and it's $223 per month for students in those seats. And that's that half-day program with our peer models. This is the most exciting part about our jobs. We have a lot of community partners that we work with. Strive comes into our building. Strive works in our library with our children. They also foster positive interactions and support during lunch with our children. This year, we partnered with the Stratford Volunteers and we had members come in and read to our students in the classroom. We work with Parents Place closely. I'm Angie Joy and Kathy Kirkland put on some evening activities with guest speakers for parents. I work with Kathy Vaneky at Honey Bear, especially this year. We worked a lot with Care for Kids, but also with the change to Early Start. The two of us have been collaborating a lot. We work with Suzanne Clement at CES, and also CES provides professional development in our building as well. One of the most exciting things that we're collaborating this year is with Ty Sims, Mark Anthony Cologne, and Elizabeth Crosby on the STAR Grant. And I don't know if anybody knows about that grant. We are proud that we have four apprentices in our building who we have hired as teacher twos. And while they're working for us and gaining hands-on experience, they are also earning their Child Development Association credentials. So we are building our workforce within our school. And so that is such an exciting program and grant that our staff has. They will be registering for college. They have mentors in our building who will walk them through the process. They have a coach to help them with their classrooms, and they all receive a free laptop computer so that all of their learning that's online happens then. We also have the Stratford Public Library who brings in books every single month based on our themes. Really excited that I think we went through the final inspection with the Y so that we could now hopefully soon offer an after-care program for our students with the Y from 2:30 to 5:30. So we're really excited about that as well. Kathy, did I miss any other community members? Our curriculum. As a NIAC school, we really have to follow the curriculum. So creative curriculum is what our teachers use. We also have standards in preschool that we have to follow. So we follow the Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards. We call them the ELTS. And we also have their assessments that go along with our standards. The key learning areas, and remember in preschool that it's done through play and exploration, through early language, literacy, vocabulary. We have mathematics, science, and the arts and physical skills. We also have our teachers, they're all trained on integrity. We use the pre-k Haggerty as students begin to build phonemic awareness. And this year, we're really excited to be working with the pyramid model for our social, emotional competence within our children. We had CES come in last year and train us, a small core team of us, and now it's going to be implemented throughout the whole building. And then Fill Your Bucket, Caitlin Carr, our school psychologist, came in last year all excited about wanting to do Fill Your Bucket. So we started it last year. This year, she's going to make it school-wide. But our children show kindness, empathy, and positive relationships. And they'll tell you, I got a sticker because I filled someone's bucket today. So now we have a bulletin board that she's going to be doing with buckets. And we're going to be putting and displaying little pom-poms on there to show every classroom as they fill their bucket. And we want to work with our community to somehow celebrate the whole school as our whole school fills their buckets. So we're really excited about this program that Caitlin brought in. I can't speak highly enough about our dedicated team, right, Kathy?
I love the picture of Colleen as the princess.
Colleen is dressed up as a princess, reading to our students. We have a book day.
Colleen's their secretary.
She's our secretary, yes. And we have a drummer who comes in and works with our students. Every single person on their list and more comes together every single day to greet our students. It is amazing to watch everyone in action. When children come into the building, we all have our walkie-talkies. Everybody's communicating where children are, getting them off the bus, in the car loop, walking children into the classroom. And they're three and four years old, waving goodbye to their moms and dads and caregivers as they're walking into the building with us, sometimes crying. Sometimes we're crying with them as we, you know, take the child and say, Mom, they're going to be okay today. So it's an amazing staff that we have and such a dedicated team. Our professional development, last year we started Purposeful Play with Karen Gray. It fit naturally into preschool. That is something that we do really well. Karen is coming back this year, but the difference that she's doing this year is actually pushing into the classrooms and coaching at the same time. Fill Your Bucket, we're going to be, we're going to continue this year, and Caitlin will be working with our staff on that. And starting in fall 2025, we will be implementing the pyramid model. We're collaborating with CES, and what they're going to do is go use the coaching model as well. So they'll be pushing into the classrooms to do that. MTSS in preschool, this was not something I even thought about last year. I had a whole team of teachers, special education teachers, our readiness or early start teachers, school psychologists. Start teachers, school psychologists. I had the custodian there, Kathy, secretary. Everybody came together, and we made a list of what are some of the changes you really want to see happening. What can we do this year? What can we do next year? What can we do? And Heather made sure, she kept saying to me, don't do it all in one year. So we really tried to go slow. One of the things that came to the top was, we don't have an MTSS plan. Preschool, some children come to us coming from a preschool, having experience, and some come from none at all. So what do we do? And how do we, how does that look in preschool? So our staff came together and said, we need to create an MTSS plan for preschool. So we started to research it, and there really aren't a lot out there. We checked with the state of Connecticut. We really couldn't find one. And if there was something at different states, it wasn't thorough. It wasn't complete all the way through. So we quickly came to the realization that we were going to have to do it ourselves. So one of our special education teachers also has her administrative certification. And Megan Sobolevsky asked me if she could lead the team, and I said, absolutely, that would be amazing, so that we're building this from within. So we took the Stratford's plan as our framework and really began to research what would support, multi-tiered system of support locally in a preschool. And a year's worth of work, they were able to put together a document. So then we took this document, and we shared it with Dr. Diorio. We got feedback from her. And then our next step is to revise based on her feedback. And then what Megan Sobolevsky and I are going to do is meet with the state and have the state look at it, because now we want their feedback, the experts who are sitting on our state for preschool. So that's our next step with this document. Our parent and school activities, there are so many that happen every day. You know, I could hear the doorbell ring and maybe twenty parents walking through because they're going to a class to celebrate something. We do have the last year book fair nights twice a year. We have parents coming in for classes that Kathy may set up with a guest speaker. We have open house happening. There's a lot of activities that our parents can take place, that take place with our parents in our building, sometimes during the day and sometimes in the evening. One of the best nights we had was our first annual art night. Our teachers took all of our student artwork and lined the walls, their classroom doors. I think if they could have done the floors, they would have, right?
It looked great.
Yeah, it looked great. And the parents and the communication we heard, children talking to their parents about their artwork, children being celebrated, and parents saying, you need to do this again next year. So I will make sure it goes on the district calendar next year so that people can come to the Victoria Soto art night. We also have a monthly literacy board that is in the center of our hallway. We have a monthly story that the teachers read over and over to our children, and our children are able to express themselves through artwork, and that's that larger metal picture that's right there. So this is a basic overview of what happens at the Victoria Soto preschool. We had convocation today and got back to school, and the energy was alive as teachers were getting their classrooms ready, waiting for our youngest Stratford learners to walk through the doors on Thursday. So if you have any questions, I will answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
I, as a, as a parent who had four children both through the Stratford preschool program, and Miss Leary was their, was their teacher, but all four of them, I was always very happy and impressed with what was offered. This is now fifteen, ten, thirteen years ago. But now seeing we're going to consolidate to Victoria Soto, I just, I, it just seems so, even so, even more robust, and I think you guys are, I think you guys are all pretty impressive. I'm, I'm, I'm excited to see the growth and the energy.
Come visit, seriously. We would, we welcome you to open arms, come visit and watch what happens there. It's amazing.
I would not be surprised if you find out in a few months that their model, I'm bringing it to the state, becomes a state model. They did a really nice job. Thank you.
Maybe somebody, if we, anybody who's on the state board.
And we do know somebody on the state. Thank you, everyone.
Before you go, I, I do have a couple of questions. So the age groups, what, what, was it three to, three to five?
Yes, it's three to five years old.
Okay. And you, you had, you had talked about purposeful play. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So purposeful play was a statement that came out two or three years ago, three years ago. And basically, it is learning through play, but it's, it's with a purpose in mind, right? It's not you're just going out to the playground, but it's with a purpose in mind. So we started a year in Stratford in kindergarten, first and second grade. I believe we worked with Karen Gray for all of those three years, and then it became mandated for preschool. So we brought Karen Gray back into preschool. So one activity that I can say we did this year is, they had to create an area where they went shopping and there was a dressing room. So our students had clothes hanging on a rack that they built with boxes, and they had like a dowel, and they had all these dress-up clothes, and they would be trying them on. So it's the stuff we already have or recycled materials, but our students are putting things together and using their imagination through play and then acting it out. So they're really learning what a dressing room was, how to go shopping. They had a cash register because after they bought something, they went over and pretended to buy their items. They had shopping bags. So there was a whole big talk about, you know, what does it mean with a shopping bag and how you recycle? So they talked about all of that as well.
And then I, I think by the numbers I saw, did I have two-hundred-and-forty-eight students in the box, is that?
Yes, we could have two-forty-eight, but I, I could open one more classroom. So we could have more. Right now, I have one more classroom left to open.
So we have two-forty-eight, maybe availability for one more?
Yeah, and then hopefully, there's a second classroom if I could get some kind of construction done with that. So I, I'm looking at possibly maybe two-eighty, two, three-hundred students opening that, in that building.
Sue Join applied for a grant. So you may hear shortly whether or not they get that grant. That will, that's the construction that they need in order to expand another classroom. And they will let you know as soon as you know.
And what level of work needs to be done, let me say, construct?
They need a bathroom.
A bathroom and an outside door. That's two things.
Okay.
So the grant comes with, it comes with something, like what we come.
So, so you have a classroom, but the classroom would need a bathroom and the exterior door?
Yep.
And is there space within the existing building for that bathroom? Or do you have to?
No, it's, so lucky. And my custodian was the one that said, Sue, the bathroom's on the other side of the wall. So really lucky that that's how it turned out.
And so currently, the two-forty-eight were maxed out, but you talked about a waitlist. How, how big is that waitlist?
It grows, yes. It grows all the time.
It keeps growing.
It grows. And, and we, unfortunately, you know, we don't have a seat for every child, right? So we keep trying to expand as we go.
Typically, over a hundred students.
Yeah.
So I, I understand that we have some students who are tuitioned, some of the funding is grants. I don't know if you could put together like a financial perspective on what it costs to run the building and where our funding comes from? And, and the reason why I ask is, if we add a better understanding of, my, my understanding and my thought is that that's kind of a self-funding program?
Our aim is for it to be that.
To, to some extent, but if it's a self-funding program and we have the need for, we have a, a student population that needs access to it, why wouldn't we expand? It, it would, it would help us or future boards make decisions on how we could expand the program if the need was there, and if the funding, if it was a self-funding program, it would make it a whole lot easier. Then it's just maybe perhaps reallocating some space, but it's knowing the dollars and cents to know what we can do and how we can do it and how it possibly can expand. So if you guys can put together maybe just a, a dollars and cents on, on what it costs to run the program, and even, even if we're, you know, generating an income on it, then perhaps we can take over some of the building expenses and offset that for the town, whatever it might be, but just so we can have a comprehensive financial plan on it. And I know, I'm guessing, I'm guessing it was mainly.
It's actually a great idea, and I know Sue's been working very closely with Susan Nicholson to actually understand because it's really a complex funding situation, but I don't want you to think that it's self-funded because you fund a significant, not significant, but a large portion of it still through the general operating budget, and we do pay for all cell benefits associated with those positions, which most of the districts I have been with, they simply cannot absorb the cost of health benefits for those employees. And we do have probably fourteen physicians that we still pay for.
You pay for the special education teachers and special education physicians. Those are mandated, and so those are paid for out of the Board of Ed. Also, love the idea of growing the preschool, but I am the ones who've told Sue she has to put the brakes on and grow slowly. And part of it's because getting staff for preschool is really challenging, and we need to make sure that the classrooms are set up and, you know, she's already filled the classrooms in that building quicker than I thought she would. She's opened multiple classrooms since she took over this job, which is great, but staffing the classrooms can be challenging for both of them, and we have to make sure the classrooms are set up appropriately. So I do think it's a great idea for you guys to put that together, and I do think it's something we need to think about in the district. We just have to remember there's lots of pieces that go into it. A, it's a very complicated system with all the different grants that fund it, but B, very challenging across the state to staff preschool.
But, but part of that, to your point, would be creating some long-term planning. So we're not reacting as the situation rises, but putting some future thoughts and forethought into it and making plans now for maybe by what take place in five to six to seven, but getting those steps in place now so we can begin the process of, of, you know, of thinking it forward.
And partnering with your community partners, because they work with the other preschools in town as well. And any child who's attending those preschools that need special education services can have children brought to get speech and other services from us, right? So we still partner, because we'll never have enough seats for all the preschool kids that we need right now, right? With our current setup of our buildings, but we have other preschools in town that we partner and work with in order to make sure that we are servicing, you know, all of the students that we're, trying to be a good teammate with our partners. I mean, that's why I said to you, she works with Honey Bear very closely, you know, as well as some of the partners.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, Susan, you make me wish I was four years old again. But do you know offhand how our full-day tuition compares to like Sterling House, Helen King Reynolds, Honey Bear, those others that offer full day?
So interesting. One of the things when I first came into the building, our tuition was really low. So what we used was in Care for Kids and working with the state, we have to come really close to what the state guidelines are, and we weren't. So we're still, we're still lower in our full day and school day. We're still below the state recommendation, but we couldn't bump our tuition too fast for our parents, so we're going slowly on that. So if the other preschools are aligned, especially for Care for Kids with what the state requirement is, we're all in the same ballpark, but we were substantially lower, so we're taking baby steps to raising.
So I get the sense this program's much more comprehensive than what I've seen at like Sterling House or.
Which is a lot of moving parts too, yes. And, and then we have the art hall, special education, preschool.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, she's made a lot of strides into making their budget more stable. So there were so many pieces and so many moving parts when Sue took it over. She really did spend a lot of time with Susan Nicholson looking at that. So they are closer to being a self-funded program. They are closer to being sustainable. They have, you know, inched up to where they're supposed to be for tuition, our tuition is still low, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and.
Especially after an exciting day.
Yes, thank you.
All right. We will now move on to the superintendent's executive report.
And I'm sure most of you can tell I'm fading already because I've been up since too excited about convocation. But this morning, we officially opened the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with convocation. It was truly an inspirational start. Our teachers and staff were lifted by the voices of our own students, alumni, and colleagues. From the joy of bubble-blowing readers to the talent of Stratford High School senior vocalist, to the moving words of our keynote speaker, Brandon Gerard, the morning embodied our district theme, lifting student voice and strengthening our community connections. We ended convocation united under the Stratford promise to listen, to leave with hope, and to ensure that every student's voice is valued. This summer, we've been extremely busy, so it was exciting to welcome our teachers back. We had an administrative retreat and a cabinet retreat where we all really spent time aligning these goals that were themed through convocation. We also held multiple coffee and conversations that were filled and beautifully attended, and I thank all the board members who came and supported those coffee and conversations. They were wonderful. We have begun now, since the state funds have started to be released and the grants are now open, we've started to relook at our alliance, which you guys will get a copy of that once it is all completed. We don't have the amount per se yet, but we, the grant is open for us to start filling it. So once we finish filling it out, we'll get you a copy of that. And then we really built some more connections with our community partners. As you heard from Sue, we're expanding our partnership with the YMCA to open an after-school care program at the preschool. We've expanded our special education connection with Sterling House this summer for their summer program. And we really worked well with the public safety leaders, came in and did a presentation to our administrators just to make sure that our schools are ready to open and are safe. So I'm really grateful for the commitment of our staff, our partners, and of the board in preparing for this new school year. So we begin with a clear path forward. We're going to be lifting student voice. We're going to expand our connections, and we're going to deliver on that Stratford promise that Brandon spoke about this morning. Oh, one more thing, sorry. These are the three professional developments. If you guys could approve them at some point, that would be wonderful. This is where I want to attend this year. One of them is an AASIA conference that I was personally invited to that they paid for, and the other one is Cave in Caps, which I would really like to attend, and hopefully some of you are attending. And then I would like to actually go to the AASIA conference, and I would like to take Dr. Diorio and Dr. Piazza with me. I think it's going to be an extremely powerful conference this year with a heavy KI view. So I know that you need to approve those.
So, so those dates are, and, and ten-twenty-six through ten-twenty-eight? Is that a weekend or is that a?
You have to look.
I mean, you can, you know, without, without objection.
It says Sunday through Tuesday.
We have a couple more meetings before I have to go.
Just a few.
Sunday through Tuesday.
Sunday through Tuesday.
It's October. November's a weekend.
And the cave is, is just a typical board conference.
Cave meeting, which hopefully you guys will attend. Some of you did last year.
And February is the long weekend.
And the AASIA conference, can you hear us just some detail on?
AASIA is a large superintendent network nationally, so they hold one, they hold tons of conferences throughout the year, but they hold one large conference where the majority of states send representatives and you, you know, go into different committees and rooms to focus and learn about certain topics. So if we went as a team of three, we would be splitting up to gather information and be able to bring it back to the district. So I think it's really important for us to be part of that.
So you'd be going to learn and then bring it back to the district? And if we send you to Nashville, do we need to send a supervisor to ensure you attend these courses?
Diana will behave.
Will you?
Diana will keep track of all these.
You're in charge. And do you have any other speaking engagements that you can ask for?
Not yet. AASIA is doing a story on me that's going to be released in November.
November.
Me, you, and doing my job. They wrote an email to me and Teresa, and Teresa got privy, so she responded and said she'd love you to do a story on her, her information.
Good job, Teresa. Thanks, Teresa.
I think they were looking at rising stars. That was the purpose of it. So without objection, I, I'd like to have a motion to approve the, the board just and her requested cabinet members to attend the ten-twenty-six, eleven-twenty-one, and two-twelve conferences?
So moved.
Move back Mr. Dow. So, Mr. Ryan, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
I just had a question. I just had a question. There's no information on the cost.
Yeah, I don't have it offhand. I do know it was budgeted, it's within the budget that we have for professional development. Teresa had checked that, and I made sure I had enough to include Diane and those.
I will say the Cave Caps is minimal. The first one is no cost, and Nashville for the weekend.
The first one, they're paying for me to.
Just kind of ask us.
Yeah, I can get you the exact cost of the last conference, but it was within the budgeted PD line for cabinet.
And any other questions? We'll start again. I shouldn't ask for discussions. There's a motion made. All of them in. There's a motion made, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fashionably. All right, then we will move on to the chief operating officer. Oh, before we go, there was a discussion about a welcome center. Has there been any progress made on that?
No.
Just flat out. Is the discussion out there?
No. It's. Not yet.
Okay.
We have to work with the town, we need a location, it needs to be a partnership for a larger scale idea. That I know a lot of people are very interested in, but it's going to take a lot of logistics and things before I bring it to you guys.
Okay, all right, thank you. Chief operating officer?
That would be me. We are primarily focusing over the summer on wrapping up fiscal year twenty-five. We opened, of course, fiscal year twenty-six, and believe it or not, we're already starting to set our calendar for the budget development of fiscal year twenty-seven. So it's quite common that we're working three fiscal years for a few months. The auditors have given us some dates, in fact, I think they're going to be here on Wednesday. And we are currently still trying to just work with the town to finalize some adjusting entries. And Susan Nicholson takes the lion's share of handling the EFS report, which is the annual state report that requires us to report all our expenditures in a very specific way in accordance with our charter of account, uniform charter of accounts. And that is statutory due by September second this year. And we're wrapping it up, probably, we will have Ms. Borges certify it by Thursday. So we're in very good shape, again, thanks to Susan. But I will be bringing you the final financial report for fiscal year twenty-five after that time. It will be unaudited at that point, of course. But I do want to make you aware that we are projecting our deficit at this point to be slightly higher than the five hundred thousand. If you recall, originally, we thought it was going to be around a million. Then we had some reason to believe it was starting to lower a bit. And there's a lot of variables when it comes to estimating our final utility bills. We had some unexpected additional expenses with special education. Just a variety of things that are pluses and minuses towards the end of the year. So it looks like it's going to be about six hundred and fifty thousand. At this point, we still feel that that one million dollar carryover that we have a balance of after we pay for the right to the expenses, will still cover it. But as soon as we have a tighter handle on that number, we will be bringing you an additional transfer request so that we can completely handle that deficit through the one million dollar carryover amount. And hopefully, we will have that for you in September. And in September, we'll also bring you the annual closing process, which is that blanket year-end budget transfer that you improve every year. And that simply allows us to true up all our salary accounts. Some end up a little bit in deficits, some end up with some extra money, we can move around. We'll have some special education adjustments, our utilities. We did save money on natural gas this year, yet our electricity was higher than we had anticipated, if you recall. I mentioned that throughout the year because of the initial tax, the pure tax, that wasn't supposed to go into effect and then did. For all those reasons, we have all those year-end adjustments to make. And lastly, obviously, fiscal year twenty-six just started. And the summertime, of course, is very quiet as far as entering purchase orders and making purchases, particularly in July, and then we really get going. So we will present you with a year-to-date report in September for that as well. Probably still won't have a whole lot of information yet. But the good news is, at this point, I don't have anything concerning to share with you about fiscal year twenty-six yet. So hopefully, that will remain, given our fingers crossed. But that was a focus that I really wanted to bring to your attention as we move on to our conference.
Any questions? And the assistant superintendent's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As we begin the new school year, Dr. Piazza and I are really excited to share some updates from the teaching and learning department. The incredible work that happened over the summer just amazed both of us, and we're happy to share some with you. We'll start with some curriculum writing updates. Thanks to the Board of Ed for your contributions and support for curriculum writing. This summer, dedicated teams of educators engaged in extensive curriculum work. And for elementary, it focused on the subjects of health, literacy, and social studies. And the teams that participated in the writing were so excited to get the work done and collaboratively and really work to mesh the subjects together to try to reduce the workload on the teachers so that we can cover similar themes and topics together all at the same time, which would allow for more thorough learning for the students. I do want to give a shout out to Dr. Khan, Dr. Tmina Khan. Even though she is hired to do STEM, really jumped into social studies and literacy to help support, knowing that we were missing, you know, we didn't have a department head for humanities at the time. And she really felt so strong about collaborating between the subjects that she kind of took that on and went above and beyond. So we're appreciative, appreciative of that. And we also look really forward to working with Ms. Owens in the humanities department. I think she's going to be a great addition to our team. At the secondary level, over sixty teachers collaborated with department heads to revise and enhance curriculum across more than thirty subjects. These efforts spanned all core subjects, including English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Career and Technical Education. And the impact that this work at both levels will be felt directly in our classrooms, where students will benefit from the high-quality cohesive instruction. So we're really excited about that. We had new teacher orientation towards the end of the summer, which was very well-attended. We even had staff come back during their summertime on their own that were hired from January on purposely to participate in some of the things that they didn't get to as a new teacher, because they were hired mid-year. We had a very collaborative approach this year, working with the SCA, working with their CEA department with great introduction to important things that new teachers maybe might not think of as a new teacher. We've worked with many of the local communities around the neighborhood. We went through the strategic operating plan and talked about how important that is and how all the components tie together. We ended the tour the last day with a bus trip around the town and just pointed out specific areas to them. We joined Bird's Eye, where Tammy Trojanowski gathered so many other community members to speak to our new teachers. And it was amazing to hear even teachers that live in the town were not aware of some of the resources that we have available to our students. So it was really a lot of fun. Oh, and we, we really focused on restorative practices for two whole days. And our own, well, or our own people, Kiana Taylor and Marina Chikorini, who have been trained to be trainers and train our new teachers, did the whole two days. So for the first time, we were able to do it in-house, and it was so dynamic. They brought a whole nother level. I mean, kudos to the state and Joanne and Freiberg and Pat for all the years. And they really trained our two in-house members. But it was really, they were able to speak very specifically to Stratford. So I think it, it lifted a whole nother level of learning for them. So it was great. Thank you for that reminder. I want to update elementary instructional minutes guidance was shared with administrators and staff. These guidelines are meant to provide structure while still honoring the professional judgment of our educators. We're really trying to bring back autonomy to our teachers so that they could make sound decisions. So it's, you know, not a strict guideline of how many minutes, but it's a guide. And hopefully, they will learn what they're, you know, to have autonomy over. If they need a little bit longer in a lesson, because it's going to really hit home and have the students learn better, they have the autonomy to do that. So we're excited for that. Our Portrait of a Graduate work we did move, we're really trying to move from poster to practice. And I know secondary has done a lot of work in, in that area. This year, we continue our work to embed the Portrait of a Graduate into everyday practice. Our focus is on cultivating the skills and competencies that students need to thrive and build confidence, critical thinking, collaboration, and more. And at every level, we're moving this into middle school and elementary so that at all levels, they can have that real classroom experience and can evolve to support transformative learning experience for all of our students. The Portrait of a Graduate work was embedded in the curriculum for both levels. So we're really making a conscious effort to show teachers how they can embed those skills in without leaving it up to them to kind of figure out on their own. Our district theme, as you heard all morning, all day today, was elevating student voice. We are encouraging all staff to kind of create opportunities for students to express themselves, influence their learning, and engage in active participants in the school communities. So we'll continue that work as we move forward this year. And finally, our partnerships and shared leadership. This year, the Director of Student Services and I will be partnering as a district-wide roadshow. Bill wants to steal that line, but he can't. But we'll be visiting each school to share our vision and reinforce the collective commitment that all the children are all of our children. And that we are working as a team to make decisions on what's best for all the students, doesn't matter what department they're in. We also will continue our coffee and conversations with teachers that we started last year. For secondary, they will be holding two sessions per building, fall-ins springing with a renewed focus on both celebrating successes and identifying areas for continued growth. In addition, we'll be launching new student voice sessions, trying to pull in student voice into our coffee talks to hear directly from our learners about what they value and what we can improve on. And we'll bring that down to our teaching staff. As we begin the year, we want to thank our staff to their, for their continued dedication of our students and school communities. Their passion, expertise, and hard work lay the foundation for everything that we do. And we are utmost appreciative of our teaching staff. And we look forward to a year filled with learning, growth, and collaboration. And of course, we're thankful for the Board of Education for your support in making all of this work possible.
Thank you. Question? Couple questions. So our cell phone policy, have you received any pushback on it? And then we're about ready to roll out a full board, so. I know I've seen, I've seen, I've seen the communications, but have you received any?
I was going to say, you want to ask me that question in forty-eight hours?
Right now, we have not, but we are having challenge with the town getting the boxes up. I did speak with them today, Widbridge, and they said they would pack them up for us by Thursday. We told them how vitally important it was that they were hung on the classroom walls. They've all been delivered to the classrooms, but we are waiting on the town to hang them.
Can I run, guys?
No.
So we'll wait and see.
Yeah, but it's been a focus of our, it was a focus of our admin retreat. We've gotten feedback from the admins. We've heard about their plans, they're going to be rolling it out. I mean, it's been rolled out to staff, but it's going to be discussed at their upcoming faculty meetings on, on Wednesday. So I'm sure there'll be plenty of feedback to give you at the, at the next meeting.
And and I know I've heard some reports, but did we talk publicly about the, the summer school programs? The ES, was it ESY? ESY? Have we, could you guys give us a final update on that?
So you will get an update on ESY in the September meeting from Ms. Rella.
All right, excellent, thank you. Anything else? All right, moving on, look for acceptance of the minutes for the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and the July thirty, twenty-twenty-five special meeting.
Second.
Second by Ms. Angela Powers. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fashionably. Look for a motion to accept the personnel assignments, resignations from the union of resources. By Ms. Vidal. Second by Mr. Cormier. Any discussion?
I just had a quick question. Under the stipend positions, curriculum writers and outreach workers, some of these positions say.
What pages are in front?
Page twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Some of these positions say budgeted new. And I think that they're positions that we've already had. So in other areas, they will say budgeted replacement. So I was just wondering if it's a new position, these are all new? Or if this is just a change in the wording that we're using?
I think some of these are the extra, the extra monies we put forward to assist in the summer curriculum writing.
So they're, they're budgeted positions, but the person that's filling them may be new to that position.
Okay, so like if you look at a.
So like some are like number four on that list is a grant rehire. It's the same person being rehired to continue with that writing. The one above that, number three, and number two, those are new people to writing for those curriculums. So the, the curriculum writing is budgeted, that's what's budgeted, but the person filling the position is the new.
So then budget replacement, what would that be in there six?
Replacement, yeah, it's.
Wouldn't that be the same as budget new?
It depends, so budgeted replacement is going to be like they're in the midst of writing a particular curriculum? And they're, they're replacing somebody on that, not, not that, I don't know whether they call them staffer group or.
All the curriculum is technically new, right? You budgeted for it, it got approved in the budget, those were newly budgeted positions.
Right.
What you're looking at in the four with the replacement is a substitute Spanish teacher who's replacing a vacant.
Right.
Spanish teacher position.
But like this one right here, budget replacement, or there's some that aren't curriculum writing, they're advisors, is that the same thing?
So yes, so drama advisor is not a new position, it's each new person.
New person in there, yeah.
But they were all budgeted.
All right. Anything else? No? So we do have a motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fashionably. There are no budget transfers. Last month or at the special meeting, we had a discussion, and this is just, I'll read it, a letter. And I brought it to the Building Needs Committee, but Board of Ed approval feasibility study for Bunnell High School and Stratford Public School District realignment. At a special meeting held on July thirty, twenty-twenty-five, the Stratford Board of Ed engaged in discussions with various stakeholders regarding the future of Bunnell High School and the broader use of district facilities. These conversations focused on the needs to evaluate renovation options for Bunnell while also considering opportunities to optimize the use of all school buildings in a more efficient and effective manner. Following these discussions, the Board voted unanimously to authorize a two-part feasibility study. Number one, renovation of Bunnell High School, an in-depth evaluation of the renovation needs and options for Bunnell High School. And number two, a district, a comprehensive district realignment study, an analysis of the potential fiscal and educational benefits of district-wide realignment, including the possibility of transitioning to a one-high-school model. This study represents an important step in planning for the long-term needs of Stratford's public schools. I, I talked to Ms. Manjini a little bit about it and didn't know, I just wanted to bring it to you guys and get your thoughts on it. Do we want to maybe look into the possibility of taking on some of that responsibility ourselves and conducting a feasibility study that looks at the potential fiscal impacts of a one, one school district? Or do we want to wait and allow the town to move through its process? My only thought was we could share some of the burden and perhaps have the information. My whole thought, I don't know the right answer, but I would like to have the information so we can have an intelligent discussion on it. I'd like to have the facts that would kind of guide us. And didn't know if we as a board would want to sit back and wait or maybe look a little deeper into if it was possible for us to perhaps engage in part of that feasibility study now. And I'll open up the floor for discussion.
I think there's a lot of information that's needed regarding that. How much is this, would this feasibility study cost? Do we talk about that?
I, I think Ms. Manjini started working on it, and I don't know that she has the.
Sorry, I apologize.
I apologize. We did reach out to.
And just, but everything that she's done, she's done at my request. So this is kind of my own initiative. So if anybody wants to blame anybody, blame me.
We did reach out to our friends previously at SLAM, now called M P Planning, just to get an estimate on what that kind of report would cost and they are working on if they were indication. So Mike indicated that over the next week or so, we can, that we just give us a ballpark. From that point, releases, we would have to try to identify funding. It's a little bit early in the fiscal year to know if we will have significant savings and I have no idea what this could cost. I will only tell you that our districting was around seventy-five thousand dollars. So these usually are a bit costly, but I honestly don't know what to anticipate.
So does any, Ms. Galvain, did you have anything else or?
No, I just know that the town's, we have a building needs committee, they had already approved the Bannell High School feasibility, correct? Before we requested the full feasibility.
So the feasibility study was just Bannell High School? There wasn't details on?
Right.
But, and again, in my opinion, if we're gonna look, do a feasibility study, it's gonna be something where we look at the best uses?
No, I understand that. I just, I think that, you know, our problem is that it wasn't like, I don't know, maybe we didn't follow the process.
We, we sent over the, the request, you know, at the mayor's request to do a feasibility study. In, in my opinion, part of that feasibility study should be the best uses. It's just defining it, defining where it goes. So that's kind of where it's at. But again, I guess we'll wait here for Ms. Manjini to see where it is and we can have a discussion as to what we may and may not wanna do. We might wanna just sit back and wait, but I, I think this is the time to have the discussion. I think this board was unanimously and enthusiastically in favor of it, of looking at a single high school option. And again, it might be the wrong answer and it might be the right answer, but until we have the facts, we can't make that decision. So I know that the council met last week and the committee, the feasibility study committee wasn't on the agenda, so now we're another month down the road. So I don't know what, what their timeframe is. It was on the, it was on last year's capital improvement plan, now we just approved this year's capital improvements or, and then we had brought Ryan Snyder down. So we're talking probably five years from yesterday, realistically. So it's just, let's have that conversation now, but do we wanna take an active part in it or do we wanna sit back and wait? So I guess the first step would be, can we do it? Well, the first step is do we wanna do it? The second step is can we do it? And the third step would be, how do we do it? So, but I just wanted to have it out there, so we just keep it in the forefront. You guys keep it in mind, you can consider it, kick it around and then determine the path you wanna take and even you guys.
We'll get you the cost and the permission.
And even the, the folks who are coming back next year, how, how far you wanna take it and how aggressive you wanna do. But I, I just wanted to keep it moving along. So anyway, that was that. So Ms. Borges, it is up to you, but I do not believe we need your cabinet members here any longer, so if you'd like to.
They can go if they'd like to spend a little longer.
If they're like. And then we'll, so we'll move on to the, the certification of Honey Spot School, discussion possible action.
Yeah, so I'm making a request that this board vote can send forward to the town to reinstate Honey Spot as a school. They are gonna be releasing those seed grants in November. We would like to apply for those grants. To apply for it, it has to be a school, so the process goes that you agree as a board to say you'd like to take it back as a public school. And then that goes over to the town for their final vote and stand for approval. And then once that's all set, as long as that is all set and in place before November, we can actively apply for those grants.
So then, and after the motion, we'll, we'll get into discussion, but look for a motion to reinstate Honey Spot School, Honey Spot School, Honey Spot Building as a public school.
A I P.
As an A I?
A I P, the Alternative Instructional Placement. So we're asking for Honey Spot, which is the Alternative Instructional Placement, to be reinstated as a school.
So moved. Second, Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion?
Double question. My question is the program right now that we have their project uplift, when a student is expelled or OSS, I was just suspension, they go there. The only caveat I thought to that was it couldn't be in a school building. If you turn this into a school building, will that program still exist?
Yes, so that program will still exist. And if you remember when we used to have alumni expelled students, we're sending. So you can still do it, they have to be in a separate part of the building. Okay? And so that's why we want the construction grant to be able to expand that building, to be able to expand the programs we can do within that building.
And the, the construction grants, if I remember, was for the roof, solar and a new boiler.
So we would be applying for the construction grant, yes, for those things. So after, we want to make it a school, how this works is it's gonna go over to the town and then they're gonna send the fire marshal out and inspectors out and they're gonna look through everything and decide, do I think it's those things, Mike? Yes, I do think those are the things that'll be on there. But in addition to that, we would most likely be looking at demolishing the portable section that's there because it is old and not okay, right? And then rebuilding a section there for another expansion of one of the special education programs if we were to get the grants.
And we did, if I remember correctly, in our, in this year's capital improvement plan, we put some significant dollars at Renee's request for that building.
Yes.
And that went into the town's.
Yeah, that's in the town's capital improvement. My request is really based on us wanting to apply for the seed grants at the state level.
Who currently pays for the electricity and all that? Is that in our?
Yeah, we pay for it.
Oh, we do?
And we did even when it was.
No, I, I just couldn't remember whether half of it was, not like some of it was split with the town or something for that building.
A spy or when they were there, you used to pay a portion of our custodian.
Okay, then there was some expenses paid there and that's.
And that's what triggered our curiosity on Honey Spot was when we had.
Inspire.
We had an inspire, aspire and we were still paying it and that's. So, so what would be the uses of it if it's?
So again, it was approved as a grant, right? We would like to service our students with emotional disabilities. That is the population we feel like we are struggling the most with and we are struggling with outplacements and appropriate outplacements and bringing students back. So listen, every district right now is gonna apply for those seed grants. Do I think Joanne is amazing? Absolutely. Do we seem to get a lot of the grant she applies for? Yes. But in order for us to even apply, it has to be a building and then we would have to take it step by step as we were applying. So part of the seed grants is to really help the regionalization of special education. So if we applied and got that grant, it also means we would be accepting tuition from other towns in order to service their students. The thought behind that is maybe Bridgeport makes an A V A program and Shelton makes a different program and we make the program for students with emotional disabilities and we all work together regionally to keep the costs down to service students that we would otherwise pay high rates for outplacement. So it's a long time down the road. We can't even apply for the grant, it's not a school. But the idea for us that, because we already feel like we're growing our A V A programs for students with autism, it's growing within our buildings, it's growing exponentially, it's huge. What we're not growing are our students that are struggling both behaviorally and emotionally. And so that's the area we would like to apply for the grant to expand, which does align perfectly with A I P. So it's a good expansion and a good combination through different areas. But that would be, you know, if you made it a school, we put the grant in, we keep you notified as the grant's going along and you let, you know, if you were, if you did it, it would be a multi-year grant of first years for the construction, right, and second years for the staff and the expansion of the program, and the third year you start collecting tuition.
I love that reading. So to move it back into the category of a school building, what kind of financial implications would that be? And my concern is, or my question, it has to do with, it has to be at certain standards and it has to meet certain requirements and we meet certain building things. I know you mentioned fire marshal, all of those going in. I know how old Honey Spot, that building is, I taught there many years ago. What would it take financially to get it up to standard as a school?
You, as a group, make the recommendation to make it a school. The people go in and do an assessment and provide that assessment to the town. The town is the one that agrees to pay for the renovations in order to make it a school. However, keep in mind, we use a large portion of our S R money to redo that school. So what it's probably going to need is a boiler, need. What we want is solar on the roof. We don't have it, but we don't have to have that to make it a school. So really what it's gonna need is a boiler. We would love to, you know, possibly look at central air, possibly look at solar, but we already did a whole bunch of the other infrastructure, everything, all the wires got rerun, you know, we redid the structures inside the building. So if you've been in there lately, you can see that it is beautiful now, but that's because we spent S R money on it, so there's probably gonna honestly be very little that the town has to do. But the town would be the ones that tell us no, right? We make that recommendation, they get the report from the fire marshal and from inspectors and then the town says, oh, it's too much money, we can't do it. Right? Then we just can't do it at that point, right? But the town could say, yep, we can afford a boiler, we'll add it to our capital plan. Renee already put something to on the capital plan, including the boiler and the solar in anticipation that we were gonna wanna make it a school.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, question? No. Roll call. So the motion is to reinstate A I P, AKA Honey Spot School as a public school, correct? Ms. Galvain?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Baddell?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Ms. Angelo?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, motion passed unanimously. All right, so we move on to number five, revised policy. So back when we initially started the policy committee, this, this terms policy committee, we broke up into subgroups, myself, Ms. Merini and Jess Morelli took this portion of it. We went through, just kinda wanted to update it. So we went through, made some changes. You, you've received a copy of, of it. And then we sent it up. Ms. Borges had instituted a communications task force and had requested that we send it to them to make sure that the policies and the changes we might have been making were aligned with the new communication policies and everything has aligned. A lot of it is just language changes, some of it has been, some of it we referred to the attorneys on, like on, I guess, the third page about information obtained by media from students does not require parental approval. We asked our attorneys and they said absolutely not, maybe it does need parental approval. So a lot of its language is like a lot of the things we've done, revised parent guardian, revised some of that. And then further back again, we just, we just changed some of the languages, I think to make it, make it more, updated today's language and, and sure we were doing things properly. So that's it.
It's a first read.
Yep, it's a first read. You guys all received in your pony, I'm guessing?
Do you wanna make a motion so we can discuss it?
Sure. So I'd make, I would make a motion to approve as a first read.
So moved.
But Ms. Angelo, follow.
Second.
Any discussion?
Page forty-one.
Are you, you said forty-one?
On the bottom. Not on the, in your pony, not in the, the document. One, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph, it should say legal custodian and not guardian approval, parent or legal custodian.
Just legal custodian.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We did keep the parent, it's just you're taking off this part, the.
I think we kept parent legal custodian on.
Or guardian.
Yes.
Yep, in the fourth paragraph, yes. There you go. Just so it's consistent language. And then page fifty-one, and you might wanna refer to it in the original as well, 'cause I have some questions about things that were taken out of this one. So I'm gonna open it in both packets, it's the last page of the policies in this packet.
Page fifty-one?
Fifty-one in your pony, in the last page of this packet. There is a parent, and it should say parents or legal custodians to the public on the first paragraph there, concerns to parents or legal custodians to the public. So we just need to add a legal custodian. And then.
Are you getting those, Teresa?
Thank you. And then it says that four and five were removed. I just wanted to talk more about why they were removed, the purpose of that and if everyone agrees to that being removed, 'cause I think that the public should have some kind of recourse if there is an issue to come to the board. And those are the two that were removed, four and five. So if you're, I don't know if this is the policy that you tackled. If not, maybe the policy, whoever did this one can talk more about why they took four and five out.
Yeah, I can, and I think Ms. Borges can elaborate. These grievances are handled internally through the board and through not the board, but the Board of Ed and the administration handles parent's grievances and it's not something that the board, we don't take up specific issues with, with student behaviors, student, student punishments, so, but.
It's a day-to-day responsibility, so it's.
Yep. So if it's not being handled properly, where does the parent, legal custodian go to deal with it afterwards? So it's saying it did not handle, well, it could be the state, but it also could come to us.
Yeah, the state is where the process is. So you as a parent are unhappy with how we as a school district responded to something. You file that with the state, if it's special education, there's a special rule where you do that. You wanna violate with the O E C or another agency, you were more than able to, there's a step process for that. If, you know, the state comes back and says, I'm not doing my job well, well, you guys are gonna work with me on that, right? But the process with the parents is set up for us to follow our internal process and for them to then follow the process to the state.
And they're, they're able to hire applicants as well.
Absolutely.
And they, they, they also have I Ps and there's a.
And the state requires us to do.
They're more than welcome to, to speak to the Board of Education.
At a meeting.
At a meeting in a public forum, but that's not something we would vote on or deal with, not, not student, you know.
I mean, the only thing we.
Student issues.
Our one employee is a superintendent, so this is somebody having an issue with the superintendent, we should know about it as a board, 'cause that's our employee. I'm not saying we should know about the student's issue per se, but we should know about what issues that they're having dealing with that, saying it's not being handled properly.
Well. But we don't deal with, with student behavior in, in that manner. We don't deal one-on-one with student matters.
Okay. My point was like if they're not handling it in the proper protocol, take Heather out of this situation completely, it could be a totally different superintendent in the future. If they're not handling it in the proper protocol way, as a board, we should know about it, not just the state, 'cause we are the ones that are hiring the superintendent.
So I think you could as a board request the state complaints, right? Because the complaints can be about anything. It can be, you know, a complaint because.
You need to.
You can fill a speech and language pathologist position and a parent, you know, feels they missed out on hours, right? It could be because they didn't feel like they were being heard, it could be that they think it's racial related. So what you could do is ask the superintendent to turn in any complaints on a monthly basis so that you would have the amount of complaints and how they're dealing with it. But I do firmly believe that your superintendent, regardless of whether it's me or someone else, needs to be trusted by the board to run the district and put the protocols in place and follow the procedures. And if parents are unhappy with those procedures, there are other procedures to go report back to the state.
And we as a board reset policy if, if the actions of. If, if the actions of anybody within the staff are not following policy, we can ask that to be looked at. So, if it's, whatever that policy is. If the policy's not being followed, then we can request that they follow. If the administrative policies aren't in adherence with the board policies, we can request or even demand that those policies be made in the same direction as the board policies. But as far as the day-to-day operations, if a parent comes and says, I don't like how they handled my phone call. I don't like how they administered my child's education. Those are not issues that the board takes up because that's not in our scope of work.
To Jill's, to Jill's comment, to Jill's point, I think, this is the point, if it's gone, if it's gone so high as the parent is not comfortable with the superintendent's.
Response.
Response or, because at that point, the superintendent has ended the discussion. How do we know about it? Because you just, you just say, well, the policy is, we would. But I think to Jill's comment, how would we know? We wouldn't know anything about it because there's nothing in this policy right now that tells that, puts it in front of us if it's escalated higher.
So, so what I can do is.
And I'm not saying you, it's in general.
I don't want that to be. I just, it just seems like.
You just said it in a policy, but how do we know, how do we know it's an issue in a policy if we don't know if the situation's escalated that far? It's not gone from the superintendent to the state and it's gone around us.
So, one of the, the first line, it says, if the matter cannot be settled satisfactorily by the superintendent, again, that's a very random term, satisfactorily. More often than not, that's why the advocates are in business because it's not handled satisfactorily by the superintendent or their staff. There's a process to go through. If you'd like, I can take four and five, send it to the attorney, see what state statute.
Five and six.
Five, uh, four, five and six.
No, it's four. It's four and five in the original policy.
Was it the CAE policy being used?
Yes, CAE policy.
Yep.
So, is this the most recent version of the CAE policy? So, if CAE still hasn't been here.
This wasn't, this has not been updated since two thousand and six.
Yeah, so I would be interested in seeing this most recent copy of this from CAE as well.
Well, you can look it up, but I'll, if you'd like, I'll send it to the attorney and make sure it is in, it is in the correct legal language as to what our responsibilities are and what our. So that we're not, so that we're not stepping on the superintendent's toes, we're not violating any laws. The whole, our whole discussion was that, is that this is beyond the scope. It was our belief that this was beyond the scope of the board's authorities. But I would be more than willing to send this to the attorney and have him review it. Anybody that already don't remember, it was about a year ago when we started this.
Yeah, and I'll pull the most recent one and compare it before. I think that we should look at that further before.
Okay.
I would think that anything that arose to substantial discussion by the state or the board chair would be notified, somebody would be notified. You know what I mean? I don't. There's been notifications that have come through to various board chairs in the past where they've been notified of something at the state level, not necessarily having to do with superintendent, but the state, well, you know, if there's action to be taken by the board or there needs to be some financial oversight or policy change because of an action that happened in Central Ops, that would be notified by the state. I don't know that it's our job to slap the superintendent on the wrist to, you know, forgetting, you know, referring to the state.
I actually don't see a problem with that.
No, 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 I don't.
I more don't want you handling student problems.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that to.
And that's what I'm referring to. I'm referring to student problems. If something, if something escalated, I'm sure we would be notified, not, I'm not saying like behavior within the office, I'm saying.
Right, but I think to Jill's point, it's kind of removing the accountability, at least of the board or the superintendent to the board. If you go through each step, right, problems and concerns, questions concerning individual schools should be directed to the principal of the school. So, if there's a problem, if a parent has a problem with the teacher, they go to the principal. If the principal has a problem with, they go to superintendent or the parent goes to the superintendent, they have a problem with the principal. Where does the parent go if they have a problem concerning the superintendent?
The state.
But first and foremost, that superintendent is employed by the Board of Education. So, why would we skip over the board and go directly to the state? And are we going to spell it out for parents that they're going to, that don't email me, email the state?
I don't, as a board member, I don't want to be notified by the state that there's an issue in our, in our home, in our house. I'd rather, I'd rather know what's coming than be surprised by the state.
So, we have gotten, I won't say significantly, but probably a dozen emails that went out to the entire board of parents who are unhappy with the process. More often than not, my recollection is that I've sent the email forward, the email to Ms. Correa just, and she said, we're handling it. It's been resolved in some manner, but again, it's not our authority to tell her how to resolve issues. If she's, with students or with staff or with parents. So, again, that's why I'm saying I would send this to the attorney to make sure, to put it in the proper legal language so that we don't overstep our authorities. And we do not have the ability to tell the staff how to do their job on a day-to-day basis. That's not, we set policy, if the policy's being followed, our job is done. We don't get into the day-to-day operations. And unhappy parent does not mean that the process was handled incorrectly. It means that a parent disagrees, they can hire an advocate, they have other avenues to do it. And, yep.
Well, just to your point there, that's number six on here. So, when a complaint is made directly to the board and the whole board or an individual, you will let the superintendent know. So, it's not saying not to do that, and it's not saying to just attack them because, you know, but to know what's going on. Are the policies being adhered to? It's not saying that we're going to fix all the problems, but it's just to let them know what's going on. So, we are not involved every single day, but we should know if there's issues that aren't going by the. And when we get something, like you said, we send it to the superintendent, and that's what number six says.
Yep, and that's why number six was left in there.
I think we're taking out two major parts before six that I think still need to be there personally.
Okay. Let's, I mean, we can table this now and get the answer to this or we can accept it as a first read and discuss it too. But I can, I can get the answer from our attorneys and ensure that it is properly legally worded and that it does not give us authorities that we do not have. It was the belief of myself and my team that this gave the board authorities that we did not have. That's what we're.
I would like, not just from the attorney, but from CAE, their current policy.
So, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have those two.
So, before we table, is there any other discussion on any of the other items?
And if we want to pull out that one policy, because the other ones, there's no issue with?
So, no, I mean, I just, once we table, the discussion is done. So, if there are other questions or concern.
Let's table one, table one policy and keep the rest of the policies as for a first read.
I'd just assume table the whole thing. If we're done with discussion, table the whole thing that we can pass it forward as an entire piece. It's not, it doesn't, this isn't overly time sensitive and then we're not handling separate. I just want to handle it, any discussion we want to have, because if there is other discussion on other items, let's get it out so we can ask these questions now. But if there isn't any, then we just, you know, table the whole thing until we get a, that's how I would refer to it. Just table the whole thing. If there's the only issue, let's table it, get those answers, and then we'll take it off the table next time and accept it as a first read. Because we would still have to go back and accept this as a first read. So, the timeframe is still the same. You guys, if you're making a motion, I'll accept whatever motion you make.
Keep it all together. I'll make a motion to table this so we have the further information from our attorney and from CAE.
Second.
Oh, second. Carol Babian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, there is no discussion, I don't think.
It's tabled, so.
It is tabled.
There are no tables on this stuff.
And I will commend Ms. Angela Powers on her thoroughness. And we talked about this in the grammar and she's somebody who reads everything and picks up on, and I had said it's not a bad thing, but she picks up on every mistake. So, it's a good thing she kept us, made sure everything. So, thank you and I appreciate the discussion. So, committee assignments. We had a vacancy on, one of our committee, curriculum committee members moved to another district. That person was a union assignment. They have, I think, by contract, a bill.
She was not one of the S E As appointed.
They felt that it was, but I didn't think it was either.
They are not.
Okay, okay. So, but either way, did you?
We have a new recommendation. We would recommend Afton Giliard, our gifted and talented teacher, to be added for the remainder of this committee's terms.
Who's name is it?
Afton Giliard.
F T O N?
A F T O N. Giliard.
So, I'd make a motion, so I would make a recommendation to point out Giliard to the curriculum committee for the duration of the assignment.
And Dr. Deorio and I did check with the teachers' union and they are okay with that recommendation as well, regardless of whether it was their appointment.
So moved.
So, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passed unanimously. Alright, so we're onto the committee reports. And I would guess you guys have a bunch of stuff we'll be looking at next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a lot.
So, this is like you're staying here for training for next month's meeting. Finance Committee, Del?
Meeting mid-September. We'll have some numbers by then. Hopefully, we're, we'll be better than that.
School plan planning, because of circumstances beyond our control, we canceled our last meeting. At the next meeting, I want to bring up a tour. I want to start. I know, Ms. Angela Powers, you've been in all the buildings, but we'll have a regularly scheduled meeting in next week. But I want to have a tour of the plan planning committee. I want to go through specifically Lordship and Worcester schools. A number of us have already done it, but I want to make sure that the people on plan planning are aware. I, in my opinion, those are the next two schools that would need significant work. But I just want to make sure everybody sees them, they're in the building, so we understand the implications, even with the rationale, what our direction is. But we didn't meet, so.
Did plan planning already do flood?
Yeah. We did flood it like a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it was a long.
It was a long time ago.
It was a long time.
It was before you were on the board. So, two years ago now.
And was it plan planning or was it the board?
It was plan planning.
One may be a little more tighter than make-up.
Yeah, but, but, I don't know.
Worcester was renovated when I was there.
There, it's.
That was a long time ago.
Well, Worcester was one of the schools, including feasibility study, so.
The last time it was renovated was thirty years ago.
Maybe you just want to do all three.
For now, we'll do the two and then we'll jump on that. So, but just to make everybody aware, so liaison, town, P O E committee.
No meeting with that one.
Policy review. We met August twentieth. We, Mr. Cormier and his group has started, is probably halfway or two thirds of a foot, halfway done combing through policies to find grossly outdated policies. And we will start possibly after they're done with that to look at some of those or at least leave it as a footprint or a pathway for the next group.
And we're also starting to set a schedule for review every five, within every five years, like a rotating schedule of policies to be reviewed. So, it's done on a regular basis. And that's, that's what we're working on right now. And it can be used by the board or not.
And we also received a very large package from CAE of updates that they're going through, so you will be getting a full form.
They're all new, they're new policies. They're not revisions to policies where we have. It's mandated.
And so, we've also put Mr. Delapiano, Ms. Andrea, what's it? I figured last name.
Delpino.
Delpino. And Carla Armstad, its attendance, the attendance policy, and then just we had passed. But there was a discussion, things are working here and not. So, why throw the lady out with a bathwater? We'd like her to take a stronger look at that and see what's working and what's not and make some recommendations. It was revised, I think, a year ago, but just to look at it and Mr. Delapiano has some concerns about some of the language of the policies that would be detrimental to what he's going.
The concern really revolves around, you know, we've made a lot of progress with our chronic absenteeism and our policy is actually more strict than the state. And Mr. Delapiano was advocating that we keep our policy the way it is because it is working for our students, whereas the state says we could make it more weak.
What's our, what's our attendance?
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen percent, which is, which is very, very low.
Yes, so, you know, the principal's argument is, why would, why would we want to make our policy less than what it already is when it's working right now? And especially at the high school, they in particular really, you know, want to be able to continue the policy that we're doing. So, they're kind of digging a little more and defend themselves to see whether, you know, the leap proof that we have working, you know, came in and said, we should do it, we should do it the state says. So, they're having a little debate on that. I think it's a very healthy debate and they're not, well, we have made a lot of progress.
I thought I could.
Next meeting is scheduled for October.
And naming committee and business personnel committee.
We have no business yet.
CAE, Ms. Carol Babian?
No idea.
Let's see, yes, Mr. Kennedy?
Just got complication right, so our next meeting is.
Townestrafeability needs, I did go to the last meeting. I continue to advocate for Fennell, the feasibility study and kicked up a little bit of stir, but talked about the discussion of a one high school town, just the discussion of it and putting a group together that would start the feasibility study, select the company that would do it and so waiting for the council to either accept our recommendation or appoint that committee. So, that's where that's at. Anything else?
No, and Good and Well Fair, I would like to add something.
Right ahead.
I just want to wish my serendipitous to the Martinez family for the tragic loss of John Martinez last month, or this month. It was a terrible loss to the Johnson community and our community at large. So, I just wanted to wish my serendipitous to everyone. Thank you.
So, I just, I want to say that August sixteenth, I was only able to stay an hour, but the back-to-school event seemed to be very successful. Great, great turnout of community organizations.
And thank you, fourth members who came and worked and got people filed in and put in their time and effort. It was well-attended.
I think it was Sam Rosenberg that set that up.
Sam Rosenberg, yeah, and her team. But it's all the community partners that committed that really just made it amazing.
And then Wednesday at eleven a.m. at the Waldron Center, the Waldron Men's Club, we'll be giving out, I think, thirty-four teacher stipends based to help them with some of the expenses and supplies they bought. Not big, I think fifteen hundred dollars depending on what they spent.
I'll be there as well, but then I'll be given out.
Anything else? So, our next board meeting, I think, Teresa, it was.
The twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
I scratched through on the new one I put up there for you because it's due to Rashashana. We had put it up the twenty-ninth.
Yep, so that would be the fifth Monday, I believe, September. And by then, we look forward to getting these updates on cell phone and whatever else you have. So, that being said, if nobody has anything, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Del? Cormier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close.